Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call to order the Merrimack Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, March 7th, 2017. Let me offer the usual reminders to have everyone sign in on the clipboard there and make sure your microphones are turned on when you address the board. Let's see, have we got all of our members here today? Yes, no appointed alternates, so we'll go with our regular cast. How about that? That brings us to the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. Tim, what have you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, in your packet you should have a memo regarding the regional impact determination for the subdivision that's on tonight's agenda. Staff recommends that the board determine it is not of regional impact as it does not meet the standards that the board has adopted.
What's the will of the board with respect to the regional impact discussion?
I would make a motion that we accept the recommendation. Staff on this matter do not consider we need to...
Microphone, sir.
I would make a vote that we consider that the accepting the recommendation from the Community Development Director and that this matter does not need to be treated as having local, sorry, external regional require, impact.
Paul's an alternate, he can't. You can. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Alright, so that's 7-0-0 for the regional impact finding. Anything else, Tim?
I can either bring them up now or wait until item number five, but I have a couple other things. Leave it up to the board if you want to do it now or...
Whatever you prefer.
Just reminder to the board, the OEP conference is upcoming. Registration is open. If you're interested, town will pay for your registration fees. Just please coordinate with Diane and Amy in my office if you want to do that. I know that Alice there has done so already and I believe Nelson is also looking at attending, so if anybody else is interested or needs the information, let us know, we'll get it out to you. But registration is open and certainly encourage members to attend if they have the interest. Lastly is our next scheduled meeting right now is scheduled for March 21st in two weeks. As of today's date and because the deadline has passed, we have not received any new applications and unless there's any action of the board that gets continued there to that meeting, I'd recommend that the board determine that it's not needed.
Thanks, Tim. So, we'll see how if we continue anything and whether that's possible. It doesn't seem very likely, but thank you for that. I also recommend to everybody that hasn't gone to one of these OEP conferences, they're very good. I usually teach a class on that day and I haven't been able to go for a number of years, but they really do focus on planning and zoning issues and have a really good amount of in-depth information, so if you're free on Saturday, whatever that is...
April 29th, Mr. Chairman.
April 29th? I highly recommend it, it was a good conference. We gave Nelson an award when I was there too, I think. Something or other. Yeah, that year.
And I can add, come, Mr. Chairman, it's very easy to enroll online and then I believe Tim would like a copy, or you print out what you've enrolled on and give Tim a copy.
So, are there any other issues that the Planning Board would like to raise for staff during the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report? Seeing none, let's move on on our agenda. Item three is Rob Lavoy is the applicant and Scott and Christine Pierce is the owners. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a minor subdivision of one lot into two lots. The parcel is located at 19 West Road in the R1 Residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. It is tax map 6B Lot 121. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a relatively straightforward two-lot subdivision. There is a relatively large-sized wetland that encompasses a good chunk of the property. However, the applicant is sufficient upland areas to meet the requirements of the ordinance and they are proposing a shared driveway and utility easement to gain access to the back portion of the newly created lot, which will be where the new single-family home is constructed. We do have a few recommendations regarding waivers and conditions of approval, but otherwise this is a relatively straightforward project.
So, the waivers we're looking for is a request not to place monuments in the wetland?
There, I have not received a waiver request for that. I would certainly recommend that unless they want to set the wetland, the monuments within the wetlands, that they request a waiver and the board consider that. The other waiver or determination of the waiver isn't necessary would be for sidewalks.
And as a minor subdivision, it's within our purview to do with that? Thank you. See applicant here? Come on forward. Take all the time you need to set up or if you've got a plan that you want to show us, take your time.
Alright, my name is Sam Ingram. I'm for Merity and Land Services. I'm representing Rob Lavoy and Scott and Christine Pierce. They're the landowners of Lot 19 West Road. As Tim said, this is a pretty straightforward subdivision. It's, it's, the parent tract is a little bit over 12 acres. It's got a large chunk of wetland. We're in our zone, our one zone, requiring 100,000 square feet. Both the lots are exceeding that. The plan is to create a second lot utilizing the existing driveway and upgrading it at the time that the new lot, Lot 1B, Lot 121-1 is going to be built on. The driveway will...
It's gonna be built on?
Yes, it will be.
Hang on, gotta let him do all the talking. We'll have a chance with some open questions in a second.
The driveway is going to be brought up to standards and to the required 16 feet. That is going to be the whole width of the, the whole length of the driveway from the West Road all the way to the end of the, although, the new driveway, the proposed one. We provided a turnaround towards the end of the driveway per the fire department requests. That's, that turnaround is adequate to turn a fire truck around. So, we agree with the town comments as outlined in the memo. I'm going to go through those, those comments now and discuss them. First of all, we are going to be requesting the waiver for Section 406-1I of the subdivision regulations to allow the installation of an offset monument to be set at the edge of the wetlands of the proposed lot corner. That wetland is, that corner is located significantly into the wetlands, so it's kind of difficult to get to. We believe the specific circumstances relative to the condition of the land pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Setting an offset monument along the proposed lot line would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. The next was the sidewalk waiver recommendation. From what I understand and according to the regulations that I saw, the minor subdivision, there was a paved, so a paved pedestrian facility should be constructed along all existing or proposed selected and arterial, arterial streets or streets constructed as part of a subdivision. And then refers us to a second section to see what those streets are. And West Road was not listed on that, so I believe that that waiver is unapplicable for a minor subdivision. Is that, if that's what I believe? I'm just going to go through these final, conditional approval items that were outlined so we can confirm that they were going to be done. The final plans will, yes, indeed be signed by the property owners. The state subdivision for number two, our state subdivision approval isn't required since both of our lots are over five acres. The waivers, if the board shall grant those, will be noted on the plan.
You can just focus on the ones that you have any questions about or contract. If you're going to meet them...
Okay.
...breeze passed.
Okay. Then everything's going to be muted or met. The, the, one comment that I'll make was the, the comment about the safe site distance. There is currently trees obstructing the 200-foot trees and vegetation. Those are going to be, the vegetation's either going to be removed or the trees are going to be removed at the time of the driveway is upgraded and the lot is built on so that we can get an adequate, adequate 200-foot of site distance in both directions. That's, that would be something that would be done and a permit for any driveway work. Those trees are within the right of way. And that's, that's really all I have to say. The, the existing house on it is served by a well, existing well and existing septic system as well, as well as overhead utilities. The driveway that is going to be constructed is, is going to be encompassed by service and access and utility easement, so they'll have an area to run the driveway as well as any utilities that they plan on putting up the driveway. So, any other questions?
Thank you. What's the will of the board with respect to determining the application to be complete?
I make a motion. I make a motion that we accept the application as substantially complete and that we have sufficient information to make a judgment.
Is there a second for Desiree's motion?
Yes.
I was looking over this way, I got Vinnie's. Motion and second, accept the application as complete. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0. The applicant's requested a, do you have a written submission regarding your offset monument waiver?
I do. It's, we're going to cross this out though.
I assume it's substantially the same as what you decided to...
It is.
Okay. What's the will of the board with respect to the offset monument waiver?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept that I wouldn't see it necessary for people to go jumping around in a wetlands just to put a concrete block somewhere.
Okay, let's use the right language. Just grant the waiver.
Ah, please, sorry.
Unconditioned to the property.
I make a motion, we grant the waiver since strict conformity would be an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and the waiver was not contrary to the spirits and regulations.
There you go, you got the magic words that time. Lynn's going to second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 for that. The applicant's asked for determination that the sidewalk construction isn't necessary. I'm sorry, did I miss something over? No. Determination that the sidewalk construction isn't necessary, what's the will of the board with respect to that?
I'll make the same motion based on the criteria that Allison used for the priority.
Use your microphone like he does.
I will make the same motion based on the criteria that Allison used for the priority.
You only need to do that if you're going to grant the waiver. If you're not, if you're going to determine that you don't need a waiver, it just becomes part of your motion for the overall project.
If it's the consensus of the board that it's unnecessary, sidewalk is, we don't have to waive it. Does any member of the board have any further questions for the applicant about what's proposed? What's that? We didn't do that for a motion, we're just going to do that as part of the main motion. So, we decided that sidewalk was unnecessary. Any others? Go ahead, Alistair.
Mr. Chairman, my concern is that being close to the wetlands, I would like to be assured by the applicant that, A, we don't get salt and B, we're not going to get fertilizer into this wetlands area. My sort of fear is that present with this new driveway and making it safe for use and I'm presuming it's going to be gravel and not a hard step, not paved, but even then they're going to use salt because it's such a long driveway. And in developing the new site, and I'm sure they're going to want lawns, I want to put some constraints on the use of fertilizer because otherwise we're going to see salt and fertilizer in that wetlands area, which is, in my view, totally not acceptable.
Let me assist and add on to that. The applicant's been to see the Conservation Commission and one of the conditions of approval is that they'll meet the recommendations. And those recommendations by email have been communicated to me that while the site's not immediately adjacent to the Busick Brook, it is situated immediately adjacent to associated wetlands. The commission recommends the applicant minimize the use of salt or de-icing compounds on the site. Two, the commission recommends that any future development of the proposed utility and access easement be restricted to the northernmost edge of the easement. Three, the commission recommends that only no phosphate, slow-release nitrogen fertilizers be used. The commission further recommends that the applicant utilize a soil testing facility to determine what levels and application rates are necessary prior to applying fertilizers to the site. And four, the commission recommends the use of only native plantings for all green space designs. And so, as those are the recommendations of the Conservation Commission and we've adopted in our conditions of approval, or at least potential conditions of approval, that you meet all of those, those would be requirements of the Planning Board's approval. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Understood? Does that satisfy your questions?
I'm totally satisfied, Mr. Chairman. I didn't care, I've actually been to the Conservation.
Yes, they have, and...
Last night. That's why I didn't know then, isn't it?
Only, only just.
Why, just get those, those guys are fantastic about getting me to emails almost right after their meetings. I think that you probably don't put salt on an unpaved driveway all that often because it will make it a big muddy mess, but anyway, they've, they've got that bit met. There is only one point where you're very, very close to the wetlands. It is a little bit unusual to have a planning board condition that says you've got an easement that's X-feet wide, but you've got to stick to the side of it, but that's one that we're going to have to capture in a note or, or capture as a condition of approval in some way, Tim.
I would only note that because this is a subdivision, the jurisdiction of the Planning Board in terms of how the site gets laid out beyond the setting up of the property lines is extraordinarily limited. You're approving the lot lines here, you're not approving placement of driveways other than where they access the, with the exception of the width requirement that's put in for public safety reasons, that condition can be followed through. But in terms of where exactly, as long as it's within that easement, we really can't push one way or the other. They could move the easement and reconstruct, but that's ultimately up to them.
That's why I said that was a little bit unusual. Now, I did have a question about the fire department's turnarounds and you mentioned that you've got one installed or at least laid out near the existing home?
Yeah, it's not, it's not installed, we have, we have proposed.
There you go, you've got to stick near a microphone and there's one you can take with you if you need to.
Sorry about that, yeah.
Nobody at home can hear you when you do that. Okay, so that's what I wanted is to see is whether there was a turnaround at both houses.
Yep.
And there is?
Yep.
Okay. Or about both home site locations.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see the turnaround for...
There's only, there's only one required.
Okay.
As long as there's a method somewhere within the driveway to turn around, it doesn't matter particularly where it is. It actually needs to be towards the end of the driveway in order to meet the requirements of the fire department because they're treating this as a single access point for two lots. They don't particularly need to have a specific turnaround at the, the existing lot.
I think there probably is enough room there, but if they don't need it, then we don't have to lay it out. Fine with me. Other questions or comments by members of the board? Are there any butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
I just want to confirm, was utilities overhead to the new place or...
They're either going to be overhead or underground.
Don't knew that.
That's not, you know, it's not, at this point, it's not determined, but we have
adequate space for either, so.
Okay. Is the existing house is overhead?
Yes, yes. So, if that's what you're asking, yeah, the existing is overhead up to the, up to the existing house.
Okay. Is that it, Mike? Now, butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Whichever of you wants to come forward first, come forward and...
Make sure everybody signs in as well.
Yes, please. Get a chance to sign in. I'm sorry.
I stole the chair from... I stole that chair when I was doing all the signatures, sorry about that.
When you're ready, introduce yourself.
I'm Margaret B. Ham. I'm in a butter.
I'm Margaret, touch...
On 10 Jefferson Drive.
Margaret, touch the button on your microphone, I don't think it's turned on.
Should be bright, bright green there, one more time.
There you go. Pull it close to you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we got you now.
Alright. I'm Margaret B. Ham. I live at 10 Jefferson Drive in Merrimack. I'm in a butter. I'm across the swale from this proposal. I, I want to say one thing first of all. I'm very concerned that we only found out about this proposal a week before this meeting. The first time we knew anything was going on, we found somebody tramping around what we considered our backyard. And I want to know why we weren't alerted a lot sooner to this proposal, first of all. Why it took, we had to find out about officially a week before this meeting.
I'm not sure what, when you received it or when it was sent, but...
Last week.
There's a, there's a specific requirement for when the notices go out in the office and...
We can't send out an application notice until we have an application, that's when they're...
So, the application just came in a week ago?
The application came in two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
It takes, it takes our office time to process, get all the butters mailed out, prepare the notices. So, there's a state statute requiring a certain timeframe for notices, which this applicant and every other applicant meets.
Okay. Is this board going to consider any of our concerns in, in finalizing a decision or is this just a pro forma event?
I can speak for myself, I'm listening.
Okay. I can say I have lived this, in this house for over 22, 23 years, since 1988, whatever that comes to. When we bought our house, we were told up behind us was unbuildable because it was wetland or it was severe soils, it was either too, would have to be bombed practically to build anything there, or it was wetlands. Now, we know it's wetlands because I have a little rivulet that goes along behind us. So, I have some concerns. I've been grateful we've had wetlands because it provides a diverse environment, but I don't, I'm very concerned about building a house back there because you'll probably have to blast. What happens to all the stuff that gets blasted? What, what are, what are they going to do with it? I'm concerned about the driveway. You say you're going to have requirements for them. How do we know that they're going to follow those requirements or those recommendations? How do we know that? Who's going to be overseeing it when they do blast it? There are houses all around, there's houses on Brienne, there's houses next door to me. How do we know that if they blast, it's not going to affect our foundations? How do we know if they blast, it's not going to have a bunch of scree flying down the hill into that wetland that goes along the, the bottom of our property? How do we know that's not going to affect the, where the water goes? How do we know that?
All those things are regulated. There's a building officials that inspect the sites, there's requirements to control silt flow into wetlands and all of those sorts of things. I don't even know if they are blasting and they probably can answer that for us, but whether they are or not, they've got lots and lots and lots of requirements to meet to be able to do that safely, so...
And who will follow up?
The town follows up with that. Building inspectors, code enforcement officials, the community development department follows up on those things. They're not, they don't get lost.
So, I, what I don't understand is if this was a wetland, why this was allowed?
They're not intruding into the wetland, they're staying on the dry side.
We had a wetland, so...
Hang on, hang on, I got to kind of limit you a little bit. We really don't do the dialogue back and forth between you guys. But the, the plan that they have there, have you gotten a chance to see the plan?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
No, nothing's been sent to me. All I got was this little official notice.
Sure, it's, that's the way the notices come. You get a chance to come down to the office if you want to get a copy or take a look at it, they've got the one there. But to explain to what, what he's got there, the lower half of the diagram where you see a little indications that look like little tiny symbols of plants at the bottom is the wetland. And above that creek is their upland where they're dry, where the existing house is. And so, they're able to do what they're doing wetland-wise because they're not going in the wetlands.
So, there's going to be somebody who's going to control where they, what they do when they blast?
First of all, we haven't gotten to the point of discussing blasting yet, but...
We know they're going to blast because they had to blast Brienne. They blasted behind us on Brienne for years.
Can I help that, Mr. Chairman? Just, just so you know, when, when the outlet mall came in, the town revised the whole of the blasting requirements from this town. Any blasting has to be done under the control of the fire department. They will, if they do blast, they will have to take out insurance to guarantee anybody within a certain distance and you certainly be within that distance so that if there was any damage to your property, they, there would be an insurance policy in place to make certain you get the necessary funds to put it right.
And again, we don't know yet that they're blasting, but also with respect to the wetlands and that seems to be a concern of yours. If they were to do anything and to intrude into the wetlands or go too close or exceed their easement and all of that, the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services is the regulatory body and trust me, they are not kind to folks that intrude into wetlands, so...
How close to my property line is that?
Yours?
You know, I, I'm, I don't like the idea of somebody parking their butt right up my butt.
I don't blame you, buddy.
The regulatory requirement is there has to be 60 feet from that rear property line to your property line.
60 feet isn't a bad time.
That's as close as they could go. That doesn't necessarily mean they build to that point, but that's as close as the town allows them to go to the property line.
It looks like you're, well, I can't tell...
We can't tell, we can't tell whether her house is, Mr. Chairman.
No, I can't see where your house is. I thought the lot was smaller. It looks kind like your lot is kind of the whole back section there, well, most of the back line is your lot, that 6B 131. And so, I'm not sure where your house is on that site. You're going to be probably on the northern section of it because of the way the wetlands are running. And so, it could conceiv, you're probably 60 feet back from your line as well, you're probably at least 120, 130 feet, building to building.
Yes. But that's not a lot.
It's the requirement. That's the requirement.
I, I would prefer them to build it farther back, closer to West Road.
I know, they had a subdivision behind my house not that long ago before the board too, and so now there's somebody that could build in the woods behind my place too. So, I get it, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I, I hope you do because it's, it's not something we take lightly.
Under state law, the planning board can only regulate the creation of the lot. They cannot regulate beyond our setback requirements where the home actually goes on the lot. An individual property owner has the right to build a single-family home within those confines.
I don't even know why it had to be subdivided, frankly. I mean, it was a nice lot, people lived there for years and never did anything with it. So, why is it being subdivided now?
It's always within the owner's privilege to use their land within whatever the regulations allow them to do.
Yeah, they haven't been there that long.
I don't know if the time that they've been there makes that much difference in the analysis.
Well, there is a, if you live there in the neighborhood, you'd know what I meant, but that's alright.
I do have a sense of what you mean, not because of your neighborhood, but like I said, there's a subdivision that we approved for the plot behind my house, there's a subdivision for the plot behind Mike's house. You know, we've all kind of, when, when it's our turn to face these things, you recognize that there's limits on what, what controls are on regulations if somebody uses their property. If they make, if they meet the requirements like being within the 60-foot setback and staying away from the wetlands and doing those kinds of things, they're entitled to their approval, so...
So, if I don't like the way they, if they face, they face their house right on the edge of our property and look down, I don't have any right to say anything about it.
If they put it on the edge of their property, sure you do. You could inform the, the building inspector that they're within the setback.
They would not get a building permit to build it anything close to the property line. That would be something that would be inspected prior to the foundation being certified. So, they would have to have that certified before they would get the building permit to do the full house.
Okay.
Can one ask the, about a, Mrs. Ham, does, do they, are there trees on the border between the two of you or is it just, you seem to, I'm guessing from what you said that in fact it's, it's almost open land and they're going to be, you know, there's nothing in...
No, there's a tree, there are trees, but they're going to have to cut them down to build. They're going to have to, to, you know, if they're, if they're going to dig up a property, they're going to be cutting down a lot of trees, I'm sure.
Well, that's, no... Certainly some of the ones towards the front and towards West Road. I mean, they can cut down whatever they want on their lot, but they don't necessarily have to in order to be able to build a home on that site. But again, that's not something that's within our regulatory power anyway, the trees.
I understand that, that's another concern of mine.
Is there anything else that you'd like to share with the board?
Not at this moment, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ham.
For allowing me to speak. I would have liked to have heard about this sooner, though.
Anyone else wish to weigh in, tell the board. Come on forward. Get settled in and then sign in on the clipboard and when you're ready, you let us know what you got on your mind.
My name is Diane Assai. I live at 20 West Road. I'm directly across from the driveway that they're talking about widening. The one concern that I have, besides the fact that I have a well, is that on, when you're facing their house on the right side is the beginning of the very wetlands. There's a spot there between 18 and 16 West that is wet most of the time. And in that spot also, between 18 and 16, there's the, the town drain for the street that goes... that goes in, under, there's a, what do you call it?
Storm drain or cover.
It goes under the street into those wetlands.
Okay.
Okay, and when they built the house on the corner of West and Brienne, while they were going through all of what they had to do to meet criteria, there was a period of time where the water that was coming down Brienne filled the ponds that they had set aside and had washed over the driveway for Mr. Winchell's house. And that was really never rectified, but we've never had rain like that since those houses were built. So one of the concerns is what's going to happen if they widen that driveway, there's no trees left to suck up the water, and you put a turnaround in the spot that's the wettest land in that wetlands. It's also known as the Merrimack Blueberry Bog. People for many, many years came and picked blueberries in that area, and since all the building's been going on, it's not as wet as it used to be, but there's still times when it is very wet. And it's a wellhead, and it's kind of like an aquifer for those of us who still have a well. And I know that nineteen West has a well, so I would assume that the new structure will have a well unless they plan on
Yeah, it will.
Hooking up to town water somehow. But the greater concern that I have is how are we going to address that water issue? Because it sounds like you're going to cut down all the trees at the end of the road, I saw you out there looking today.
You mean the ones on West Road?
Yeah.
I think that he's going to have to clear some of the ones on West Road to get the site distances for the driveway, because you've got to be able to see down the driveway and lots, probably this road, but lots of others. I mean, every time I come out of my road, I see the same thing, the trees are kind of grown up.
But when you do, they, when they did Brienne, they took away a lot, but.
This won't be anything of the scope of Brienne Drive of Public Highway.
Well, I know that, but in the meantime, you have to deal with the immediate, which is the water issue at the beginning of their driveway. And when they take down all the trees, what are, how are you going to manage the water there? Because there may not be there today, but there will be at some other point. You know, you've got to think of tomorrow.
The trees that they're removing are proposed to be within the town right-of-way, so the town public works department and highway department will be overseeing any work associated with that to ensure that the roadside drainage continues to function properly.
So, so the only other issue then is if you have, if you have a big rain, you don't want to wash out that road, you might need to put a culvert in there.
And we have design storm, the regulations require you to design for a certain level of storm. Anything above those levels of storm, it's going to be a problem regardless of how well it's built, that we designed for twenty-five and fifty-year storms. Anything above that is, has the potential to cause issues, and that's not unusual anywhere.
Yeah, so there have been times on that street when there's been a lot of water, so just to warn you.
Thank you very much for your information. Does anyone else wish to weigh in?
So my name is Michael Bruce, I live at eight Jefferson Drive, I'm one of the, also one of the other abutters. The two hundred feet that you're talking about removing trees, aren't those trees in the wetlands?
Two hundred, which two hundred feet are you talking about?
It was, you guys were talking about removing two hundred feet for site purposes.
To make sure that we have two hundred feet of safe site distance to maybe some trees.
Aren't they in the wetlands?
They're in the town's right-of-way.
Yeah, no, they're not, they're up against.
But they're still, isn't that still considered wetlands even though it's the town's right-of-way?
No, hang on, only one of us will talk at a time. They're talking about up near the road, they're not talking about clearing two hundred feet of trees, you need to be able to see two hundred feet. So there may be one shrub and two bushes that are in the way of that entire sightline, and that's what they've got to be able to remove. Now, all of that's.
There's a lot of trees there, and that is, wetlands comes right up to the road.
Yeah, no, I understand. They still may not have to clear all the trees because they need to be able to see up and down the roadway. It doesn't always mean as many trees as you think, but whatever trees they are, are the ones that are on the dry portion of their property because that bend in West Road is going to be past your two hundred foot sight distance anyway. So that's not in the wetland part.
Okay. So my second question is, yesterday there was a meeting, how come we weren't invited to that meeting because it's the same, the conservation meeting?
Tim, you're going to have to answer that one, I don't know what their notice is.
The Conservation Commission meeting has a general agenda that notices what projects they're doing, but they're not required under state law to do a butter notification for that. Because they don't make a specific decision on the actual disposition of the application itself.
Well, I thought they did, if they determined what was left wetlands and what wasn't, don't they make a?
They do not determine wetlands, they, the applicant has to hire a scientist certified by the state to certify the boundaries of wetlands. The Conservation Commission simply makes recommendations to the planning board and other regulatory bodies based on the information they have as the stewards of the environment of the community.
Okay. All right, so I take it that the scientist was called out and the wetlands were?
If a certif-, they have to stamp the plan and they're putting their certification on the line every time they stamp the plan. So if there's an issue with a delineation, there are consequences to that.
There's a stamp on their plan from a Thomas E. Carr, February thirteenth, twenty seventeen, certified wetland scientist. So that fellow was hired to go out there and take a look.
So if he was hired February thirteenth, so wasn't there an application put in before that that we could have been notified earlier?
Nope. The applicant hires the scientist and gets his plans together. He could have done it a year ago, he could have done it the day that he turned it in.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's them.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to weigh in and offer the board some information? Mike, did you have a question?
Okay, so if there's nobody else that wants to weigh in, I got a pen that leaked all over me, close the public hearing. I do want to have the applicant have a chance to respond to the things that the abutters have said. Do you want to ask a question about some of the things similar to what they were talking about or different? Okay, so, Sam, have a shot at some of these.
Well, I mean, I think you guys did a good job explaining the questions and answering the questions.
You've got to get up closer to your microphone.
I think you guys did a good job answering the questions that were asked. I mean, I don't really have that, any more comments to add.
Oh, do you plan to do blasting to build that site in the back?
We did a test pit, and we didn't hit ledge, we dug seven, eighty-seven inches, so that's over seven feet, and we didn't hit ledge for over seven feet, so we have no intention of hitting ledge.
What's the change in grade across that lot? Yeah, it's not huge.
Did you own it? I don't know exactly, but anyway.
Could be ten feet.
Ten feet?
Yeah.
Up close to where the house is?
It's about ten, twelve feet, twelve, fourteen feet.
Above the wetland?
Yeah.
So you have no intention, no plans for blasting?
No.
If that changes, you obviously know you've got to communicate.
If that changes, then yes, the.
The owner's got to communicate through the department. Up by the road, up by West Road, tell me a little bit more about the number of trees and the things that have to be cut in order to make those sightlines work for you.
To the north of the driveway, there's a couple large pine trees. Those are going to be taken out anyway to increase the radius for the turning, the entrance into, the turning onto West Road. Once you remove those two pine trees, the sight distance is well over two hundred feet.
To the north?
To the north.
How about to the south?
To the south, there's minor brush, some pine trees that are probably under two inches in diameter, and some overhanging limbs from larger hardwood along the road that are going to be trimmed, and again, once you trim those out, sight distance is over two hundred feet.
That, how long is, the house that's there on the front lot, how long's that been there?
I think it was built in the fifties.
Okay, so that driveway was laid out and it doesn't really have any sense of when the last time those trees were cut back or sight distance were looked at before. So this is all going to be new for that. Is there a culvert under West Road going across from your property?
From, you mean across our driveway, heading north and south?
Across West Road from your wetland to somewhere in the vicinity of sixteen and eighteen West Road, which is six B, one seventeen, and six B, one sixteen.
I do not believe so.
As a condition of approval, can you double-check that and if it is there, put it on the plan?
Okay.
Any of the concerns that the applicants raised with respect to wetlands or stormwater conditions require any further explanation, do you think? Any comments for those?
No.
Let Mike have you then, because he's kind of the expert in this area.
Well, I just want to understand, with your discussion about widening the existing driveway to meet the fire width, it looks like you're already in the buffer for the wetland. So can you explain how you plan to widen that and what's the impact?
So that was the comment from the conservation in terms of keeping the improvements to the north side of the easement. If we, if we improve the driveway, the, any improvements, so. In the area to the, right near the, right near West Road is the only place where it's within the buffer currently.
Right.
So any improvements in that area are going to be north of the buffer, completely avoiding it.
Okay. Is there any way that you can slight grade or pitch to keep it so that it goes towards the north rather than to the?
Yeah, it can be grading, so it's, you know, a negative pitch away from the wetland.
Okay, and then what is the?
It's down at the time of construction.
Okay, great. And then what is the current condition right there, if there's a chance that we can improve that buffer with some additional plantings, just as a protective measure since it's?
It's vegetated.
Okay.
Obviously not within, you know, the section that's already encroaching onto the driveway, is that what you're asking, if we can put some plants in that or?
Or just if it's been kind of damaged and the wetland is right there?
You can make recommendations of that, but you can't make a requirement because you don't have jurisdiction to require, because this isn't a site plan.
Understood, yeah.
So, I mean, as of now, we would leave it the way it's naturally vegetated and then expand it to the north and avoid the buffer any more than we are.
Okay, great. And then with regard to the buffer itself, it seems like certainly it's an important aspect for the water quality and the protection, I think there's been some testimony about that importance. It also, would also allow some protection of existing vegetation, certainly that would help the buffer towards Mrs. Hamm's property. Is there any way that we could create some sort of either memorial sign or some sort of marker indicating to the future owner that this area should not be disturbed? We want to obviously preserve that twenty-five-foot buffer vegetation and not give them the indication that they can clear down to the waterfront property, if you will. But just to throw that out, I know we've discussed it in the past, whether it be just small little signs of some sorts or just some sort of marker that would give an indication to a future homeowner.
Okay.
Are you associated with or affiliated with the folks that actually plan to build on the back lot, or you just deal with subdivision?
Rob O'Boyle is the applicant, so he is the, he's the one who is going to be dealing with most of that. The owners are Scott and Christine, so that's not them.
Do you know what the intent is for how much of the trees they would cut back in the back, behind where the house is going to be built?
It's, from my, from what my belief is, it's enough for the house to be constructed. The intent is not to cut the lot as the abutter was concerned and to wipe out that buffer between the houses, obviously it would be desirable for, you know, ourselves, the home builder on this new lot to have a buffer as well, so we're not going to propose that we clear cut that lot up to that lot line, obviously.
Are you got, you're talking pine trees up front, are you got pine trees or hardwoods in the back?
It's a combination.
Okay. Some of those are going to have to go, just because pine trees get dangerous. Did you lay out the, located, you did lay out your septic system, so you've got room for that and you've done your test pit for that?
Yeah.
Any trouble with the perk on the test pit?
No, I mean, it was a very good test pit.
Okay. Other comments or questions by members of the board? What's the rule of the board with respect to the application? Nobody wants to talk, nobody wants to move.
I'll make a motion that we, X, and I'm. Grant conditional final approval for acceptance of the minor subdivision of one lot into two lots, parcel located at nineteen West Road in the R1 residential, and aquifer conservation districts, and wellhead protection area, tax MAC six B, lot one twenty-one.
Subject to the conditions.
Subject to the conditions in the memo.
Plus the verification of a culvert, West Road?
I will include that in my motion.
Is there a second for Lynn's motion?
Second.
Second by Counsel Koenig, any further discussion? The only discussion that I'd offer is, again, I'm very sympathetic to the folks whose lots are abutting these, who are going to have a house in their backyard that they thought would never be there. I've been there, but I still also recognize when the applicant's met his legal requirement, so it's the only comment that I can offer. With that, if anybody else has a comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
One opposed? Any abstaining? Six, one, zero, with Alastair opposed to grant conditional final approval. Thank you for coming in and offering the presentation. Thank you guys for your testimony as well. Item five on our agenda, I mean, four on our agenda, is discussion of the 2013 master plan implementation. As you all may recall from our last meeting, Nelson brought up a discussion that we are behind the eight ball a bit, tending to our duties on the master plan, and so we had decided at our last meeting that our first meeting of each month would involve some discussion of the master plan implementation. So this is the beginning of that. You got in your package a copy of the chapter ten implementation section of the master plan, and then at your site here today, you should have gotten two other things. One is a one-page list of the one-to-two-year timeframe items for which the planning board and other agencies are responsible, so it kind of narrows down to what we promised to do in the first two years, and of course, we're already into the third and halfway into the third year. So that's what make, that's what puts us behind. The other document is a longer version of the same thing, it's several pages long and provides a little bit more detail, and this also includes Tim's assessment of what's been done, what's been begun, and what's been completed. And with that, what I had hoped that we could do is kind of take a look at the landscape here and figure out what our work plan would be for how we can focus this and keep it productive, rather than trying to tackle a list of twelve things on a particular day. Let's figure out as a planning board what we'd like to do with this going forward. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate and I'm glad to see the planning board doing this. I certainly am encouraged that you want to get into the master plan. I will say a couple of things about the somewhat lack of implementation to this point, and I will take part of that responsibility on myself because I, until this past year, have not had a consistent year of full staffing since I've arrived in Merrimack in 2011.
So what's your excuse?
My excuse is, is that in order to devote the time necessary to do some of these things, it requires me to have competent staff that I trust to deal with the day-to-day requirements or delegating these types of things and shifting the responsibilities of other review items.
And we're pleased that you have.
And we are now at that point where we have
Competent staff.
The staff in place, we've gone a full year without changes. Gillian and Robert have made tremendous adjustments to working here in Merrimack from their previous jobs, and I have complete and full confidence that we have the staff in place to start tackling a lot of these things. Officially, the only one item that we've completed specifically from the master plan was the adoption of the changes to the accessory dwelling units section of the zoning ordinance. That was completed back in October, which was something we actually started well, almost a year in advance of that, but were put on hold by the changes that were happening at the legislature. So a lot of things sometimes are out of control, out of our control. I know the other thing that we started talking about within the last year or so that has taken a bit of a backseat, I've met with the board and talked conceptually a couple of times about doing an economic development overlay zone for the community. What I'd like to do What I'd like to do and what I'm proposing that, at least bring it to your attention here tonight, is I'm backing off of that initial design of doing an economic development overlay, targeting the parcels that frankly, right now, are actually developing without changes. We're talking about the Merrimack Hotel Site, which is now under reconstruction. Xylas has seen activity, obviously, with Vault Motor Storage. We've got the new ownership with the old Shaw's. We have activity happening at those sites that were targeted specifically in the master plan. So what I'm proposing, and I'm hoping to get some feedback from the board here tonight, is rather than focusing on doing something specific to those underutilized parcels, that rather, we take a look at our mixed-use development section of the ordinance that right now is only limited to industrially zoned parcels along DW Highway that have fifty acres and five hundred feet of frontage, that we look at modifying the language of that section and pulling it away from industrial and making it something that's applicable in a wider part of the community, so that we can start tackling that mix, a variety of implementation items, as you see here, that are dealing with mixed use and infill development, which I think is a better use of our time, that tackles a lot of different recommendations from the master plan with that one project. So that's my two cents. I hope that this four-page set of tables is helpful to give you an idea of our staff impression as to where things are. I think we're actually doing a little bit better on some of these things than on the surface it looks like, because a lot of these things are ongoing items that we're constantly doing, that don't necessarily require a specific action by the boards or the committees to do so. And I could also report that some of the other recommendations that don't do with the planning board are items that we continue to work with with other departments and boards and my staff, particularly on the economic development side with EDCAC and things of that nature. We're working on some website changes, the GIS is in process, so we have a variety of different things that we're working on that aren't necessarily within the planning board's purview from the implementation standpoint. So that's my two cents, and I certainly welcome the discussion here tonight to see where we go.
So I know that I hope that everybody had a chance to flip through this stuff and take a look at it before the meeting, but if you haven't, I'm certain that Nelson has and I have, and let's see if we can have a bit of a dialogue on how we would want to tackle these things, noting that these one-to-two-year items are followed by a grouping of three-to-five-year items. So if we go too slowly on these, we start to push back on schedule for the next cluster of the ones that we're doing. What I noted in going through this, and I didn't have the benefit of these summaries, but some of the things that I saw were, they tended to be related to each other, where a couple of pieces kind of fit together or needed to happen in a certain order, and what I was thinking of specifically was some of the things about adopting zoning modifications that allow mixed-use infill, higher density in the northern and southern, and zoning regulations to establish nodes and across the thing. Those things all seem to be all kind of related to one package idea of dealing with that Daniel Webster Highway corridor. I didn't certainly go through the whole list of things and say, you know, here are the ten that I think group together, and here are the ones that are in a different group. Nelson, did you have any kind of observations along those lines?
Well, yes, thank you, Bob. I think that one thing we started to work on and we sort of backed away from was the, what we call the T-three item, which is the townwide pedestrian and bicycle plan. That certainly ties in with the idea of nodes, of having the industrial, commercial nodes, and I think a plan like that would do us well in obtaining grants elsewhere and certainly getting us back into a position where the state would agree with our asking for sidewalk as part of development in the north end of town, which they have basically stopped at the moment because we don't have a master plan, a plan for what we wanted to do where and about by when. So I'd like us to give some attention to that, because I think it has long-term implications and it ties in with some of the other development ideas that we're, we've been talking about.
Okay. I, you know, agree with everything you said with that. The sidewalk plan, having a townwide, it may not be as complex as we sometimes envisioned it to be, but I think that whatever it is, whatever it is that we can get done...
Well, this says townwide, and the state's only looking for Route Three, and that's where I would suggest we start, with doing one for Route Three and...
Yeah.
And work up from there.
That makes sense.
The townwide may be more complex.
Does anyone else have any thoughts or comments about how to proceed and attack these things?
Mr. Chairman, my comment would be, and I think I'm sort of trying to hang on to what the Community Development Director just said, is to my mind, it's the mixed-use development of opportunities. I mean, I'm not decrying pedestrians and sidewalks, but all these things cost money, and what I would like to see is what we can do to, if you like, improve the opportunities for people to develop mixed uses in this community. I see development as the most important thing we need to do. We've got to improve the opportunity for businesses to start and grow in this town. We need to try, and that might help redress the aging number, which I believe in this town is getting rather high. I'd like to see things that could do that. It would improve the number of students going into the schools. I would like to see our efforts concentrated more on the mixed use and how we can encourage that sort of development. That would be my vote winner.
When you say mixed-use development, you mean like the parcels that Tim already talked about?
Yes, exactly. I'd like to see us grow where we can. We need more development in town. We need businesses to grow in town. I mean, I worry when I read that Fidelity are laying off people. These are the things that worry me, is that we've got somehow to increase the attract, even more the attractiveness, and we've done extraordinarily well, if you look at what we've done, that we want to see how we're going to make more and more people want to come and set up their businesses in Merrimack, because we need that to counter the costs of living in this town for the rest of us, so it's all there.
I would agree with that, but I would take it a little bit step further and kind of almost combine some of Nelson's thoughts, which is, I feel like that there's a need to make Merrimack as much of a destination location with the same theme that you're talking about, but, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's on the weekend and someone wants to go and find a bakery and walk the town, or find a nature trail and walk the town, and then maybe shop. I feel like that the access to Merrimack is very broken, and the connectivity of these different kind of really neat features of our town are broken up where you can't enjoy it collectively, or you can't park one location and travel or bike or something like that. And I think that if we were to look at trying to find corridors where we could make connections or encourage connections through either revising zoning or codes or something like that, or just by simply making a public accessway, I think we maybe could start to bridge some of this for that, that ultimate goal.
Please don't think what I was suggesting was excluding. I mean, I consider exactly what you say. I mean, it depresses me that we still don't have a bus service going into the outlet mall.
It depresses me at all.
They, well, I'm sorry. I mean, I hear what you say, but if we could encourage some means of public transport into that area, you're making a start on getting people into the town. I mean, the fact is, there's a buses that go backwards and forwards between Manchester and Nashua. I don't know what we have to do to persuade them to do a slight detour.
Give her the tolls.
Hmm?
Give her the tolls.
That's not my purview. But we do need somehow to encourage, I think it's all wrong that we're running buses everywhere, but we're not running buses into this town. Everything's going past us, and that's, I'm so wanting to make access to Merrimack better. Yes, widening the road would be great. Getting rid of the tolls would be even better, but I want to see what we can do to encourage people to come to Merrimack, shop in Merrimack, live in Merrimack, increase the citizenship, and reduce the growing problem of we're all getting older. That's my view. That's my, but I'm not excluding anything that will do, make that happen.
Just to piggyback on that, when I talk about expanding mixed-use opportunities in the community, I'm talking about taking what we already have done, improving it somewhat, and making it applicable to other parts of town. Right now, you know, look at the parcel, the L parcel, the MPO piece that Mr. Monahan just came in and got his conditional approval. That required variances, because our ordinance right now only allows you to do mixed use if you have a certain type of industrial zoning, you have a certain number of acres, and you have five hundred feet of frontage on Daniel Webster. It really was designed for two parcels, the Flatley piece and the piece down in the southern part of town where they have come forward and, right now, outside of those. We don't have any other places.
And even there were still variances needed for that as well.
Well, I support him. I mean, I'd be quite happy to see that number, those numbers...
And encouraging and doing things with pedestrian connectivity is a big part of that mixed-use project. So it's not something that excludes multimodal transportation opportunities. It's something that hopefully builds the destinations you need to make it work.
Totally agree with that.
If I could try to think of what it is that focuses all these things together, I guess I could pick geography and say that it's the DW Highway Corridor. That's where the commercial development is, that's where you've got to put your mixed use, that's where you've got to prepare for infill as you redevelop some sites and deal with those kinds of things. And so I don't know how many of those items on this list are ticked off by saying DW Highway will be where we start to focus this, but let's do that.
I'd say you probably get six. If you were to do a comprehensive look at mixed use, you'd probably knock off six separate recommendations.
Yeah, I would agree.
I'd agree, yeah.
So...
The only other point I wanted to make before I believe, it's not technically related specifically to this, but given where we are and since the time that has elapsed since we approved the master plan, I would pay less attention to the timeframes and pay more attention on the things you think are achievable and things that the board is interested in doing at this point, not worry about which column it falls in on the implementation table. Rather, let's look at, see where can we be most effective at this point.
Substance over style. I agree with that, and thank you for pointing it out and reining us in on that one. So let's focus on DW Highway. We will deal with these things at the first meeting of each month. I think that if we're talking about taking our mixed-use concepts, our conditional use permit concept, and seeing how we can apply that to smaller parcels with less frontage, because frontage and the size, as well as I-one zoning, are the limitations that we've put on them, and if we're looking at putting that in commercial, where, when, and why would that be different, or should it be different at all?
Should it be different? Do we want to look at separate criteria, depending on what the underlying zoning is? Do we want to look at different densities? Those are the types of questions that I'll be bringing forth as we start working on this, assuming we get the green light to start moving forward on this.
Paul, you look like you had a question.
Yeah, well, I agree with what we're going towards. I kind of got to, not put the brakes on it, but I've been drawn into more than one conversation, twenty, forty-five minute conversations, of people that have been here for twenty-five, thirty years that see where the town is going, and they've already decided pretty much to move up, because they don't like how, not commercialized, but busy it's become in certain areas. Now, I agree with what Michael said about we need to drop people in. I mean, coming from a twenty-seven-year-old, we like to start roots. I'm all for that, but I think we need to keep in mind people that have been here for extended periods of time and not try to, you know, corner them out.
You're absolutely right. I think that, I can offer some thoughts, I don't really know that I have answers for anything. Traditionally, it's been kind of the one side of the highway versus the other side of the highway as being the divisions between where those things happen. There really isn't much in the way of commercial development on the west side of the turnpike, and on the east side you have it. And so that's been a way of saying, we're going to satisfy both of those needs by doing that approach. The other thing that I offer is just a pure observation, and that is, haven't heard that much lately, but like you, I've heard before people say, we've got to maintain our rural character. Merrimack is certainly not a big city. It's not, you know, Manchester or Boston or something like that, but it is New Hampshire's eighth-biggest city, and so this isn't, you know, some of the small towns that are out there where eight hundred people live out in Danbury or something. I think that's sort of the fact of life, is that it isn't there anymore.
I think I agree with what you're saying. I'm just saying we need to be, you know, ready for the kickback...
Yeah.
...of people that have been rooted in the town for a while, also small business owners, who many of these people were.
There's, there's ways to find, find some synergies for those, and for example, we've as a planning board heard from the Agricultural Commission at various times about the importance of preserving what few little farms we have left, and part of that is, you know, having a farmer's market, and the farmer's market works where people are, and so you got to have people come buy their stuff, and so, you know, there's always ways to say, okay, if it's over here, we can compartmentalize some things and do the higher-density building in one area, or something that has some pluses and minuses for everybody. So I guess all I can say is, let's all keep that stuff in mind as we go forward. I think it is definitely one of the reasons why for saying DW Highway, which really doesn't have very much vacant land on it at all, there's a few parcels to the north and Flatley. Most of them are being redeveloped if they come forward at all. You're not necessarily making a difference where you're getting rid of what people have thought of as open space, so, okay. One of our things on our list, and I don't remember if it was on the early list or the late list, was to figure out how to get more access to the river, which is also going to be part of that DW Highway corridor, whether we like it or not, because that's the only way to get there from here.
It's on the list, Mr. Chairman, actually.
By, by access to the highway, the Town Council and the Department of Public Works are moving forward on an effort to build a boat ramp on the river, accessing near the wastewater facility as opposed to off Greeley Street. I think that was a good move, because the cost of doing that off Greeley Street was very large and problematic. But they are moving forward in next year's budget with an effort to, to get a boat access to the Merrimack River in the southern part of town.
Yeah. I think a boat ramp is a big part of it. I was also thinking of just ways for business to be developed along the river, if possible, because, and I know that the geography is really strange with the railroad tracks and little narrow bits of parcels that are on the other side, but if you look at some places that have made real use of their river fronts, they've put a restaurant there with some tables that overlook some things, and some walkways, and some riverfront parks, and some things where you could actually go there and, you know, take in...
See the river.
Take in the whole thing. And, and I get that a boat access is going to be great for the people that do boats, but that's not necessarily what everybody's looking for. Now, it may be that it's just not possible to make our geography work, but we ought to think about what it is, and if it's smaller lot sizes for a zoning on the other side of the tracks, or figuring out, because you got to maximize the use of whatever railroad crossings you have, because they don't allow you to do much more of that. Figuring out whatever it is that we can, and of course, we're not the owners or developers of any of that land, so all we can do is...
Encourage.
Encourage, so...
Yeah, I would say, you know, it's important to celebrate that with the same, with the outcome that you described, Bob, about how businesses want to have that access, there's a great connection to the, to the environment, and it promotes business. I think that the, the concept of creating these corridors or creating the right arrangement of zoning and development codes that encourage, you know, and encourage Vault to come in, and now they're being used as our farmer's market property, I think is an indication that the community will work itself out and maintain that heritage, because there's a lot of active people in our community, and we heard from them during the planning process. So I think that, I think that their voice is there, and they will continue to be active as we develop this, and I think we'll find the right balance because of that.
Other comments or questions? All right, so how do, I'm sorry, Giselle, go ahead.
I'm just curious, the, whatever happened to the property that's, it's like a gravel pit along the Merrimack River back behind the... Nothing.
The Longa thing?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
How much were they at?
Okay.
Yeah, they wanted to use recycled fill to fill in the old pit, and DES didn't go for it. I don't think we loved it very much either, but it really wasn't within our regulatory scheme.
Care of it, okay.
Now, if they ever decide to reclaim it with some other kind of fill or work something out, that's a possibility.
It's a nice spot.
Yeah. We hold it ground. So picture ourselves a month from now at our first meeting of April. What do you want to talk about along DW Highway in April? What do you need to see? What resource materials should we prepare and distribute to folks? What kind of an agenda do you want to have when we get, I mean, not necessarily too formal an agenda, but what I'd like to do is try to figure out how to make our meetings...
Let me propose that, since I will be staffing that meeting, as you know in advance, I will put together an outline, brief... I will put together an outline, a brief overview presentation, and we can have that 20,000-foot level discussion on that date, and we can move from there.
Okay. Thank you. Tim, is that satisfied, your friend?
Absolutely wonderful.
Yeah.
Nelson?
Again, I want to suggest, I want to suggest to the Community Development Director that it includes some thought regarding item T3 and somehow advancing that, even if it's on a, strictly limited to the Daniel Webster Highway.
I, D3, until I have a vote from you guys, I'm not touching.
Okay.
No offense to any of you sitting here, but based on the way that all went down in 2015, I'm not touching it until I have a vote.
I understand. I'm willing to make a motion to that effect, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let's have that discussion. I mean, I think that continuing to discuss how sidewalks fit in with this overall view of DW Highway is a part of the same discussion. And I don't think we have to necessarily get those things separated from each other. But let's talk about where we came from with the sidewalks and where we're going with sidewalks, and what are the obstacles in our way. And then when the board's ready to take up the question about trying to move it forward in one direction or another, or what do we have to do that will cause a different result than whatever we did last time, I think is better than necessarily just having a vote today to say, let's, we put in a stop, let's remove our stop. You know what I mean? Is that okay if we do it that way?
Yeah.
You don't agree? If you don't agree, speak up.
Well, I go back to my suggestion. I think, I think we should be discussing it, and we should take a position on it, whether we're going to do this thing or not.
Perhaps that would be part two of the discussion. I'll handle the mixed-use, and Nelson can come up with his argument and compelling discussion on how the board should move forward on the bike plan.
Yeah. I think that could be a good approach, but I think also, I have no doubt that a comprehensive plan on DW Highway is going to have some sidewalk concepts in it. It's just, there's no way we're going to, as a board, this board, is ever going to leave that one off the table. It's just something that we've always kind of found attractive to the way those developments go. Where you do priorities, or how you lay it out, or what resources you get from NRPC or other sources to kind of figure out, high points and low points along the way are kind of the nuts and bolts along the path that we have to figure out. But the overall notion of what DW Highway will be as far as sidewalks go, I mean, at least between Greeley Street and Bedford Road, the part that we control, I don't think anybody has any doubts about that.
And then one of the things that I don't know, it may make sense to, I can reach out to the folks at District 5 DOT, as to whether or not the NRPC regional bike plan has any, I don't know how much they get into sidewalks and pedestrians and that, Nelson.
It covered only bicycles, unfortunately. It didn't talk to the pedestrian at all.
Yeah. Okay. With that, I think we're okay with what we're going to do next time on this subject? All right. Our next item on our agenda is discussion.
Clarification, did we say that Nelson was going to present something, or did we pass on that? I just want to know if I'm-
No, 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 you'll present. I think so. I don't know if it necessarily is a full-blown presentation for next meeting, but just as we're going through the discussion, Tim's going to have kind of the mixed-use and conditional use permit, and how it might apply to some different areas, and then incorporating sidewalks into that concept is what we were looking to put on your shoulders, if that's okay.
Yeah, no problem. I just want to know what my assignment is. I wanted to understand my assignment.
Okay.
Is that for the next meeting, that we didn't have anything on the agenda for?
No, no.
First of all.
It is our first meeting of each month will be, will include one of these discussions, at least as long as we have a first meeting in a month.
Thanks for agreeing to that.
But I think that we have kind of reached the point where we can say definitively that our second meeting of March is unnecessary, and so we will cancel that. Any other discussion and possible action where other items of concern? I have a correspondence that was left for me tonight that I hadn't seen before, and it's kind of lengthy, so I don't necessarily have a full comprehension of all of it, but it is from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, FEMA Region 1, and it says that in July of 2015, they held some meetings in the Merrimack watershed as part of FEMA's Risk Mapping Assessment and Planning Risk Map Program. Gives the description of the watershed, which is not just Merrimack Town, but the watershed in this general area, that they're looking at mapping and remapping the rivers and identifying the risk floods related to Beaver River, Black Brook, Hassel's Brook, Peppermint Brook, Sioux Cook River, Spigot River, Sun Cook River, and Vine Brook, at least one of which must have something to do with Merrimack.
No, they're mostly in Lynch Field. They're screwed up.
So they're providing us notice that they're going to continue through this spring with the United States Geological Survey. The engineers will be in the area. Detailed studies to obtain structural geometry and elevation data, and new hydrologic and hydraulic analysis resulting in new flood elevations. The field surveying on the previously listed rivers' reaches will be occurring this spring. Be aware that you and your residents and your communities may see USGS survey crews on the bridges, dams, and rivers during the next several months. They provide a website where we can look to find more information about this and to follow up on it. They have published a report from their initial study, which is also at a website. And with this, Tim, I see you guys are copied on this as well.
I was going to say, if anybody wants it, I can scan it and email it. If not, if you do, just let me know, and I can send it to you.
I think that if you're interested in these things, it may be interesting to go see their reports. This letter is, you know, rather a lot of boilerplate, but their reports itself probably have some interesting things about whatever they're determining with. The flood maps program ends up in the flood insurance rate mapping program, which affects where we can do subdivisions and where people can build stuff. And if somebody has something that's already in an area that they suddenly decide to reclassify, it creates a mess of things and complicated process. Mike, you probably know a little bit about this. I know we've done some plant, some map amendments for some clients before, which are kind of a pain, but they're at least possible. It's at least possible. So that's, I just want to let everybody know that that's here. If anybody has interest in it, let Tim know. I don't have any other discussion items to raise. Is anyone else?
Just one thing I observed this week and was confirmed by Public Works is that the state, or through contractors, has done test borings in the vicinity of the Babusick Brook Bridge crossing the, on Route 3. And they are, so they're proceeding, these are preliminary to design of a new bridge there, and so they have to do the borings, and that was done this week. So that's a little progress there toward new bridge.
Very good. So that's the Babusick Brook Bridge is the one by Pine and Burgs?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Seeing done, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of February 21st, 2017.
I will approve as printed.
Lynn, without a microphone, moves to approve as printed.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
Alistair seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700 to approve the minutes. That brings us to our, item seven is adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Second by Desire. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? 700. Thank you, everyone. Don't forget to turn your microphones off.